Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is our first meeting in quite a while that masks are optional. And for the people at home, about 50% of the watchers, guests that are here to observe are wearing masks, half aren't. So it's probably what you're seeing out in various restaurants and stores and things like that. I do want to start by just thanking everybody for complying with the mandates. I know it was difficult at times, and we appreciate everyone's efforts. To the board, thank you for attending. Tonight, I do appreciate that also. At this time, I would call the meeting to order and ask Clerk Saladino to call roll.
Trustee Augustine.
Here.
Trustee Gail.
Here.
Trustee Kateneck.
Here.
Trustee McGee.
Here.
Trustee O'Brien.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
President Kukler.
Here. Thank you very much, Clerk Saladino. We are lucky to have two students from LT High School with us tonight, Emma McLean and Kira Jensen, and they have agreed to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you both can go over to the microphone.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you're both with LT's National Honor Society, so congratulations on that wonderful recognition and award. We appreciate your leadership at the school and your hard work. And I know you're here to talk about a great project that your organization is doing for the seniors in La Grange.
Yes. So there's like six of us on the NHS like board, and each of us on April 9th is planning a committee for the day of service. And Kira and I are doing a garden cleanup for seniors. And...
Yeah, thank you for having us. So like as a part of the National Honor Society, we are all trying to do something to help the community. And our project is helping senior citizens in varying communities, including La Grange. And so we are offering, like our student body will come to senior citizens' homes and help like with their yards and things like that, just to start the season. And we just think it would be a great opportunity and want people to know about it.
Yeah, and there's going to be like a lot of volunteers for students, so we just really want to get the word out. And we have a flyer that's we're going to like post around the different communities, including like La Grange Park and Bridge. And like they can just scan a QR code, which will take them to a form where they can like put their address and their information. But if like they don't have a phone or something like that, we also have a phone number on there that they can just call to sign up. And yeah, we're just trying to post that around, and it'll probably be on the LT website as well if a family member wants to sign them up or anything.
And I'm sure if you emailed it to the trustees up here, they would put it on their personal Facebook pages and get the word out. And maybe even the LGBA would be kind enough. Nancy Cummings is in the back, and she's already volunteered, so she can put it on. And we have Chris Johnson from the movie theater, and you could probably tape it on one of their windows. So we'll get the word out and have all the seniors' yards looking fantastic, and we appreciate all the students that are going to volunteer with that effort. So thank you for coming out tonight, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Next, I would like to thank Dr. Kyle Schumacher and Mike Melendez, the president of School Board 102, for meeting with myself and trustee Augustine to discuss parking options that may be available near Caset School. As a result of the meeting, 102 has agreed to allow the village to experiment with using the teacher parking lot that is on the west side of Ashland Avenue on the weekends, starting this weekend. So we're excited about that. We do believe that that will help with the parking, especially for the restaurants and businesses west of La Grange Road. We think there'll be about 20 spaces available for the cars. Again, that's going to start on March 4th. And we're going to also look at more parking. As the weather warms up, people start going to downtown La Grange even more. We want to do whatever we can for parking, and I'll tie it back into Chris Johnson and the movie theater. That's going to be opening, and they'll be bringing in cars from all over. And we're working hard to make sure they have a place to park. And we appreciate 102 working with us. And again, we're going to take it gradually, but we're excited about the opportunities. So again, thank you for trustee Augustine for facilitating that. That was wonderful. The, I also want to, when I'm giving out thank yous, thank you to Ricobia and Public Works. We've had some snowstorms. I'm pretty sure they're not over, but at least the cold weather might be behind us or the real cold. But thank you to your crew. We do appreciate it. We know that they work nights, early mornings, weekends, and we appreciate that. In the same vein, to all our public service, our fire, our police, when the weather is difficult, it makes their job even more difficult. So we appreciate all the efforts, and please make sure to tell the team how much we're supportive of that. It is Restaurant Week in La Grange, a fantastic time to come and dine at our restaurants with special menus. Participating restaurants have specially priced menus at lunch and at dinner. So please continue to support our local businesses. Go on the LGBA's webpage, and they will direct you to all the participating restaurants. But pretty much, you can't go wrong. So please continue to support our restaurants. Stormwater management. Again, we've been reporting pretty much every meeting regarding stormwater management efforts. We did retain Chris Burke Engineering to look at a lot of programs. They helped us write a grant that we're still waiting to hear if whether we're going to be accepted or not. It's for $17.5 million. It's the FEMA BRIC, B-R-I-C, grant program. They've also looked at other projects that may be feasible depending on how everything works out. We, as we announced last meeting, have a trial date of July 18th. We believe it's a firm trial date, and we expect to go to trial on July 18th. We're excited to be moving towards conclusion of the litigation. We recently, last week, had a meeting out on the parking lot for the village over the paver bricks that the MWRD helped us with installing. And Congresswoman Newman came out, MWRD Commissioner, era Spello Vida, and Chiquina Perry both came out to talk with us and to explain that they understand we have needs in La Grange. They understand that it's a regional problem. They want to continue to work with La Grange, and we're excited to continue to work with them this last week. Because of Mike Melendez from 102 in that meeting, he introduced me to Congressman Chewy Garcia, and I was able to speak directly with Congressman Garcia. Again, I told him about our needs, and La Grange will be in part of his district, and so he's interested in helping us also. So we'll continue to get the word out to all our elected leaders that it's a regional problem. We need their help for this regional solution. The Environmental Quality Commission of La Grange continues to study potential flood mitigation basement backup cost share program. That's basically in the framework. It would be a 50-50 program that would allow either a check valve to be installed or an overhead sewer to be installed. The commission is studying some of the parameters, guidelines, qualifications for that program, but we do believe that that is moving towards finalization. And I know they're going to address it at their March 10th meeting. We continue to update our, the village webpage, so please continue to look at that. And then lastly, as of today, we don't have a lot of work for our March 28th meeting. As most people know, we meet the second and fourth Monday of the month. March 28th is a lot of the spring breaks times, so assuming nothing breaks in the next two weeks, and I don't mean any water mains or anything, but no breaking news, we'll say, we'll cancel that meeting. And we'll notify everyone on the webpage if that's going to be canceled. So with that, I would ask if there's a village manager report? Oh, you know what? And then after your report, we'll go back and we'll recognize Mark Berklin, because I know we want to do that.
Thank you, President Kukler. As the final component of the budget development process, a budget workshop on operational expenses is scheduled for Saturday, March 12th at 8:00 a.m. in this room, the Village Hall Auditorium. We invite everyone to attend, and comments are welcomed at any time via email at apeterson@la grange il.gov. The preliminary budget documents are available at Village Hall and the library, and will be posted, along with the village manager's message, on the village's website by this Friday, March 4th. On Monday, April 11th, at the regular village board meeting, we're anticipating a public hearing at 7:30 p.m. regarding the proposed fiscal year 2022-23 village budget. On Monday, April 25th, at the regular village board meeting, consideration of the proposed, FY 2022-23, village budget is anticipated. Also, this year's spring cleanup will be held the week of April 11th on residents' regular collection day. The contract with Flood Brothers requires a separate spring cleanup sticker, and two are required at $3.05 each, or a total of $6.10 to participate, and that's an unlimited participation. Spring cleanup stickers will be sold at the same locations as refuse and yardway stickers. Some exceptions do apply. And more information regarding the program will be posted to the village website at Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Peterson. And now for Mark Berklin. I don't know, are you more comfortable sitting, or would you like to stand at the podium for our presentation? Perfect. That way you get on camera and all. So so many people know and appreciate, Mark Berklin has been the village attorney for several, several years. And before that, he was working as the zoning attorney for the village. He's been with the village of La Grange for over 30 years and has made a lot of impacts with the village. As we hear often, our downtown wasn't always the best downtown in the suburbs. And it took a lot of planning, a lot of efforts by the board, but also really the direction of Mark Berklin as our attorney, leading us, making sure that we do the appropriate zoning, that we're planning, not just six months out, a year out, but five years out for what can and could be possible. And really, it was part, a dream of his, that allowed us to get to where we're at with his legal skills to make sure that the train stayed on the tracks. And for that, we really appreciate it. Mark has decided to move to an of council role where he gets to pick and choose his work, and he no longer has to take my calls at my beck and whim. So President Tim Hanson is here, and I know Tom Livingston and Liz would also agree that having sound counsel is really helpful for this job. And so we do appreciate it. And anyway, the village would like to formally recognize Mark with the following resolution of appreciation. Whereas Mark Berklin of the law firm Elrod Friedman has generously served the village of La Grange as a village attorney for more than 30 years. And whereas, prior to becoming village attorney, Mark and his firm provided the village with expertise on planning and zoning matters as special, as well as special counsel. And whereas during his tenure, Mark supported the village board and staff with thoughtful, effective guidance, including often highly complex issues. And whereas, the village received numerous awards and recognitions for its many quality of life enhancements during Mark's service as village attorney. And whereas, the policies and initiatives Mark provided assistance with, the wise advice he gave, and the immense amount of time he spent in service in the village were always selfless and unburdened by consideration of personal interest or gain. And whereas, as the village attorney, Mark's knowledge and counsel resulted in the development of important projects, including the revitalization of the central business district, the triangle redevelopment, renovation of the La Grange Theater, and construction of the downtown La Grange parking structure, among many other duties. Whereas, Mark has been a model of good governance, passionate steward of the village, a trusted advisor to the board, colleagues, the village staff, and a graceful ambassador of the village. Now therefore be it resolved that the village president, the board of trustees, the clerk, commend and thank Mark Berklin for extraordinary service and express on behalf of the village staff and village residents their best wishes as he transitions towards retirement or of council practice. Thank you very much. Before you sit down, I'll just ask if any trustees would like to say anything. Trustee Kateneck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I think you really summed up very well all of Mark's qualities. And you know, from a firsthand perspective, I've gotten to experience all those qualities over the last seven years. And as a resident of La Grange, have been the beneficiary of those prior 23 years. So for that, I thank you. I will also echo that I really enjoyed, have enjoyed working with you. Your patient, especially to the newbies coming on, and that was several years ago for me, but just trying to indoctrinate myself on procedures and Open Meetings Act and all these little things. There was never a question that you didn't have time to answer, always explained things to me in a way that I could understand them, and I really appreciate that. And I always look, you know, your title is counsel, and I always enjoyed calling you, you know, counsel because of the counsel you've advised us on. And as Mr. President said, over a broad range of areas, which, you know, in my scope, I just don't understand always, but you're always there and always had the confidence that you'd lead us in the right direction. And in closed meetings, always keeping us on track, because sometimes those meetings might still be going on. So I'm glad that you're keeping us on track, because sometimes those meetings might still be going on. So I'm glad that you always kept us focused. And you know, Mark, I thank you for your years of service. I've thoroughly enjoyed working with you. You're a true gentleman. I'm glad the Cubs won in '16, that you got to enjoy that, and hopefully we'll see that again at some point. But as you go into this next phase of, I'm not sure how you said it again, limited retirement or...
Of council.
Of council. That sounds fantastic. I look forward to getting to that point myself, but until then, I wish you all the best.
Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. I had to write it down so I wouldn't get too emotional, tend to run off, and you've been helpful in that area. First and foremost, thank you for your clear legal leadership, your calming and informative advice, your clever sense of humor, and your emotional capacity to be incredibly caring and sympathetic in what are often very serious and difficult conversations. You've been, you have truly been a teammate for me and for us all. The amount of information you can access about La Grange policy, process, and precedent has been invaluable to this board and this staff. And last but not least, well, not last but not least, but you are, again, it is worth saying, very funny, so it's really enjoyable to have those conversations, have them be interesting, and also find the humor in some of the serious stuff. Your decision to step down was not a welcome surprise for me. Of course, I'm glad to hear that you're easing into retirement, but selfishly, this is when I need you the most. But we will, of course, do very well with our new counsel. I'm sure of that. And we will still have access to you when needed, at least for a while. So thank you again for your guidance and input in every single situation for which I sought your counsel, and for all the good you did for La Grange over all of these years.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Augustine. Trustee Gail.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, thank you. Greatly appreciate, you know, your service to the village. Always appreciate you being available to talk. It seemed like whenever I had a question or a call, it was answered and returned quickly, which I always appreciated, because usually, you know, something would occur to me at about 4:30 on a Monday afternoon before our meeting that night, and you were always available to chat, which I greatly appreciate. Second of all, you know, appreciate your straightforward advice. You know, I know that comes with many years of experience, and I think we all benefited from that, you being able to say, here's kind of what's going to happen if, you know, if you vote this way or if this ordinance passes, just so you know, which was always very helpful. You know, as a fellow attorney who can be sometimes verbose, and you spend a lot of time talking, the ability to boil things down into the simple, you know, into simple concepts is always helpful and appreciated. And then finally, you know, just so easy to work with. I mean, again, as an attorney, like you've dealt with difficult attorneys. I've dealt with difficult attorneys. It's never fun, you know? The phone rings, and you see it's that person, and you go, oh, great. But you know, when Mark, when the phone would ring from Mark, I think, oh, good, fantastic. And then we would go off on tangents and talk about the practice of law, or our families, or, you know, serving in our capacities. And so it was, it was great to work with you. I will, you know, I will miss working with you. I probably will just call you to ask you questions anyway. And yeah, and then you have the right, just as the president said, you have the right to just ignore us at this point. So please don't, but you know, best of luck as you go forward. Appreciate all the work. Thanks.
Trustee McGee.
Mark, I just want to kind of piggyback on what everyone has said. It's so true. I remember my first experience, my first meeting. You called me, you told me what to expect, and every time something different was going to happen, you gave me a phone call to just kind of get me prepared for it. And as Beth said, your spirit is so calming. You are a walking wealth of knowledge, and I just wish you and your family the best in these years as you prepare for your retirement. Blessings to you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for your service.
And thank you, trustee McGee. Ben, it's clear you have some big shoes to fill there. Mark, not to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to say anything, feel free.
All I can say is how wonderful it is to hear these things and to be with you. I remember when I finished law school, I knew I was going to be a litigator, and that was that. And after my clerkship with a judge, I turned, and all of a sudden, I'm a municipal lawyer, and that's the way it's always been. I've been village attorney in five different places, but none of them compare to what it's been like over these last 30 years, 25 years of being the village attorney and the other times that I've spent helping the village. It's something I'll treasure. It's something I'm still doing, as he knows, because we're not done quite with one of the big ones. But it goes all the way back to Tim for me, and all the way to all of you, and I appreciate that very much, and I'll always remember it. Thank you. And anytime that, you know, obviously Ben will be available, but if at any time there is something that we talked about a little while ago, and you know that in five minutes we can fix something, I'm still around. Thank you very much.
All right, moving along, I would ask Clerk Saladino to read the items on the consent agenda and any items on current business.
Matters on the consent agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote, because they've already been considered fully by the board at a previous meeting, or have been determined to be of a routine nature. Any member of the board of trustees may request that an item be moved from the consent agenda to current business for separate consideration. Item A, ordinance, design review permit number 115 or 80, South La Grange Road, Tivoli Enterprises, Inc. Item B, award of contract, replacement of cable television recording playback equipment. Item C, agreement, Gold Shield Detective Service, Inc. Item D, award of contract, codification of village ordinances. Item E, minutes of the village La Grange Board of Trustees' regular meeting, Monday, February 14th, 2022. And item F, insulated voucher, 220228. And I see nothing on the current business.
Thank you, Clerk Saladino. So at this time, I would entertain a motion and second.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Thank you, trustees. And then trustee Augustine.
Yes, as stated previously, I recuse myself from voting agenda items related to the village prosecutor.
Thank you. And before I call it for a vote, any comments? Trustee Augustine.
Yes, thank you, President Kukler. I had a question about the new piece of equipment we're getting for our broadcasts and...
So that's B, the award of contract?
Yep. The award of contract for the replacement of cable television recording playback equipment. I like that we sought Bill Allen for advice. That's obvious, he helps us out quite a bit here. And it all seems like a perfectly acceptable bid, and it's a nice piece of equipment, though, and I think it affords us some new opportunities to do things with our video production. And I'm sure we'll work those things out as we have it. But I was looking at it, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but there are 30-day warranty that is included in this $15,000 thing. And I know we're being reimbursed by the Cable Commission, but, so they're going to install this and train our guys and gals. And then we have 30 days for all of that to get back to them if we have any issues. But depending on when they install it, at best, we'll have one meeting's worth of kicking the tires on that. Whereas other people who might buy this piece of equipment, for which this may be kind of a formula, they're using it every day, multiple times a day. They're getting to see how that works for them, and they'll probably find out pretty early on whether they have questions or not. So my question would be, can we ask them to extend that warranty a few months, considering we're only going to use it twice a month? And that way, we could see how it works, and if we have any questions, we can give them a call then. So that's something I'd like to hear a little bit more about.
Maybe manager... Maybe Manager Peterson can address that.
Sure. The police, the piece of equipment that we're actually proposing here is a replacement of a, of a piece of equipment we have now. So the good news is, is that LT is very familiar with it and so are our staff as far as the utilization of it. As far as the warranty, it's my understanding that that's relatively standard, but we'd be happy to ask for whether or not they would allow for an extended warranty. There may be some additional cost related to that and we could circle back with the village board related to that if you so choose.
Thank you.
I should also mention one other thing, I apologize. The system is not operating correctly, so one of the reasons for moving forward with this is that we'd like to get it installed as soon as possible. We're not able to fully utilize the equipment because it's outdated and is not functioning normally.
Yes, no, I understand that. Thanks. I, I just know that it's a, got new capabilities and there could be a lot we can learn from it. And as we deploy it, you know, like I said, we, we may only get one or two chances for our team to see how it works in that 30-day period. So they're normally deploying this and someone's using it pretty routinely. So I think it was a reasonable ask to them.
Absolutely. Trustee Augustine, thank you very much. And I'm sure Andre will look into what options we can have for a longer warranty or training period or whatever may be the appropriate terms for, for those things. So thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? I'm going to just talk about two real quickly. That's A, the ordinance for design review. We have Chris Johnson here to talk to us real briefly. Tivoli Enterprises is the owner of Classic Cinemas. They are going to be leasing the movie theater and they are in charge of the rehabilitation of the building. So Chris, if you would just talk to the residents at home about kind of what you've done so far and what the overview of the plans are.
Yeah, so real quick, we have received demo permits and we've gotten into the building and a lot of the planning had to do with taking this building that's almost 100 years and figuring out exactly how we're going to structure the, the rehabilitation, as you say. And that's all going well and we, we submitted plans unrelated to this agenda item a week ago. And so everything seems to be on track and we're still shooting for that, you know, summer movies at the LaGrange Theater and the movie theater business, there's more releases coming. So I think this is all good timing. So we're, we're very happy and everybody, staff and in all the different departments have been fantastic and we have no, no issue whatsoever. So we're, we're, we're just moving forward.
That's great to hear. We appreciate it. We're excited as a board. I know our residents are excited for the big grand opening sometime this summer. Thank you again for all your efforts. I also wanted to talk about the award of contract, the codification of the village ordinances. Both Maureen Rush and Sean O'Connor from our staff has worked really hard on this, getting the request for proposal put together to make sure that everything that we needed was included. And then once they got the responses, to analyze those and make sure that it was clear for the board what we were voting on today. So I appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much. And it was very clear and concise and I think that's why there weren't other questions. So thank you. And with that, I'll stop talking and ask Clerk Saladino to call a vote.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Koteenek.
Aye.
Trustee Gail.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. So thank you very much. Again, there is no items under current business. So at this time, I would ask if there's any comments from the public regarding matters not on the agenda. I think if we wait long enough, there may be a comment. You got to come up to the podium.
Hello, everybody. Hello.
Good evening. You got to state your name though.
I know, I'm trying to find my notes here so I can dazzle you.
Okay.
Get ready. Are you sitting down? My name is Dave Paulus. I am from the dreaded 700 block of South Spring Avenue. Here we go. Get ready. Speaking on behalf of the over 700 members of Dry Up LaGrange, which I am proudly a part of, we appreciate your comments and your update regarding the flood mitigation efforts that have gone on. We just want to restate that we stand with you to remain steadfast in our efforts to support all relief opportunities and ultimately find a solution to the flooding problem. We ask you, the village board, and all LaGrange residents to help us to accomplish this and not let up until it is solved. It is a solvable problem. We invite all residents to join us by signing up on our Dry Up LaGrange Facebook page to stay informed. This flooding crisis will not go away by itself. It affects everyone, our lives, our health, our home values, our businesses, and our hospital access. We need your help. The leaders of Dry Up LaGrange would request an opportunity to sit down with you, the village board and the staff, and review what Christopher Burke has to offer once that report becomes available. We would appreciate any information we could get. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And again, we appreciate the efforts of Dry Up LaGrange. The board's unable to sit down with various groups because of the Open Meetings Act. Only one trustee and the president can meet with any group to talk about village business or two trustees can meet with any, any group to talk about village business. So we're unable under Illinois law and I'm sure Ben Schuster would tell us and Mark would yell up from the seats that no, you can't as the village board meet. But we will continue to communicate. We are, are meeting this week again, or I am meeting with village staff this week with Chris Burke, with the MWRD, with other leaders like we did last week. So we'll continue to meet, we'll continue to, to provide updates as much as we can and we continue to appreciate the efforts of Dry Up LaGrange in working with us. It's clear that the congressmen, the Cook County Commissioners, the state reps, the state senators are hearing, they hear that number, 700 members, that gets their attention. We appreciate that we're, we're both working for the same goals. So thank you on that. Not seeing any other public comments, I would open it up for trustee comments. Clerk Saladino tells me that Commissioner Aguilar is planning on coming to next meeting. And again, he has been working with the county. They have money. We just have to get the money out of the county into the village. So we appreciate Commissioner Aguilar's efforts and look forward to him coming to next meeting and telling us where we stand. Not seeing any other trustee comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, trustees. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion carries at 8:09. Thank you very much, everybody.